Good evening, I want to welcome everybody to the April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Item Secretary Corum is present.
Yes.
Very good, we'll move into item B in our agenda this evening, an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation and pledge of allegiance will be members of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post. Our prayer will be by the chaplain and the pledge by Stephanie Otto, commander of the Jeremy E. Ray Post.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Guide our hearts and our mind in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Empart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being a part, thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. We'll move into item C, we have a presentation this evening, presentation of police department employee of the first quarter award, Stephanie Otto, commander of the Jeremy E. Ray American Legion Post three twenty-four.
Thank you. Each quarter, the American Legion Post three twenty-four, Jersey Village Police Department Employee of the Quarter Selection Committee meet to review a list of candidates selected by their peers. This is in no way a simple task, as all employees of the department are outstanding individuals that serve a purpose greater than themselves. For the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen, the American Legion selection for Officer of the Quarter is Officer Dusty Bryant. Officer Bryant has shown a high level of professionalism, dedication, and proactivity. He loves his job and his work performance shows it. We thank you for your service and dedication to this department and our community. All of these attributes work together to ensure the Jersey Village Police Department works smoothly and provides our residents peace of mind and makes Jersey Village a destination community. Other officers nominated for this Officer of the Quarter were Officer El Asad and Officer Guzman. Thank you gentlemen for your continued performance and dedication to our community.
We'll move directly into item D, substandard structure, public. Item. Item D one, conduct to public hearings pursuant to section thirty-four dash two fifty-three of the code so that the owner of the owners or the owners representative of the property located at one five four two one Leeds Lane, Jersey Village, Texas, may appear and show cause as to one, why buildings or structures should not be declared to be substandard and why the owners should not be ordered to repair, vacate, or demolish the buildings. I also got confirmed that the meeting, I confirmed that all meeting posting requirements have been met. I will now call upon Christian Summers, the city's building official, to give a report detailing to the structural deficiencies and recommending that the structure located at one five four two one Leeds Lane be repaired or demolished. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This public hearing is to discuss the fire damaged substandard structure one five four two one Leeds Lane, Jersey Village, lot one, block forty-nine. Here's a picture of the south end gable. As the building official for the city of Jersey Village, it's my responsibility to ensure the safety of the built environment and the former built environment. To that end, the city's ordinance is required that substandard structures must either be brought into compliance through remedial work, demolished, or secured and placarded prior to demolition where such structures are an attractive nuisance and, in this case, lack structural integrity. Unfortunately, remedial work is not an option. This location is in an area of special flood hazards, actually it's in the floodway. If an existing building is damaged by fire or otherwise in excess of fifty percent of its then physical value before such damage is repaired, it shall be made to conform to the requirements of this code for new buildings, except in regards to slab height where the structure is located outside the flood plain. The structure is not located outside the flood plain. Put another way, where damage greater than fifty percent of its physical value and in an area of special flood hazards unless the slab were proposed to be raised to eighteen inches above base flood elevation, the same as the requirement for new construction, whether or not the slab is intact is immaterial. The sum of it is demolition is the only viable option six months now after the fire. Since the fire in October of two thousand and eighteen, the structure has incurred additional deleterious exposure to the elements, has not been sufficiently secured, and has gone without the required, required placarding of warning signage. To the best of my knowledge, I'm not a structural engineer, so we'll say that, to the best of my knowledge, following is a list of the known structural deficiencies constituting incomplete load pathways. Roofing, substantial loss of roof ridge members, ridge bracing, palm bracing at the ridge. The ridge is also what holds up that gable end that we saw. Substantial roof coverings and decking missing, roof rafters missing, collar ties missing, associated rafter pearlin bracing missing, destroyed and/or significantly compromised failing. Here's an example from the International Residential Code of a load path, the apex of the roof being the ridge, course rafters to either side. The highest horizontal structural element is known as a collar tie that prevents thrust. Joists down below also attached to rafters can prevent thrust. And you see pearlin bracing left center, at least that's where it's written, and that's the forty-five degree brace. Here's the rear of the structure in question. Quite a mess, it looks like the chimney might be self-supporting at this point. Another detail of the ridge and rafters. Here is pearlin bracing, it is crocodiled, it's been heavily damaged by fire. And pearlin bracing a little closer. Transferring loads from the rafters to interior walls. Down to floors and ceilings, many floor joists are missing, destroyed, and/or significantly compromised failing, especially at rear of building where there is little to no bearing at top plates. Ceiling joists rat run, strongbacks, pressure blocking and fasteners missing. Floor joists bridge blocking, bridging, pressure blocking, and fasteners missing, ceiling treatments missing, damaged, and/or compromised. Here we have joists no longer bearing on exterior walls, top plates, and no longer tied into the rafters. In fact, there aren't any rafters in that picture. Example of joists tied to rafters to prevent thrust. Little closer picture. Not a good picture, but those are joists that are compromised as well upstairs. Another picture of load paths. Cladding and fenestration, fenestration is a fancy word for glazing in doors. Loss of siding and damage to siding, some brick veneer missing and other areas damaged and/or compromised failing, missing and damaged fenestration doors and windows. According to Local Government Code, chapter two fourteen, Municipal Regulation of Housing and Other Structures, a municipality made by ordinance require the vacation, and in this case demolition, of a building that is dilapidated, substandard, obviously unfit for human habitation, and importantly, a hazard to the public health, safety, and welfare. Regardless of its structural condition, even if unoccupied by its owners, it's unsecured from unauthorized entry to the extent that it could be entered or used by vagrants or other uninvited persons as a place of harborage and could be entered or used by children, or the building constitutes a danger to the public, though it's not secured from entry very well, it's pretty much just a caution tape and some orange construction fencing, and the means to secure the building is inadequate to prevent unauthorized entry. From our Code of Ordinances, any building or structure which has any of the following defects shall be deemed a substandard building or structure and constitute a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Any building or structure that has become damaged or deteriorated through fire or by any other cause, to the extent that either the roof, windows, or doors, or portions of the house, building, or structure which protect from the weather will no longer reasonably protect from the weather. Any building or structure which is so structurally deteriorated or damaged that is in danger of collapse, or which cannot be expected to withstand the reasonably anticipated storms or hurricanes. Any building or structure so maintained as to constitute a menace to health or safety, including all conditions conducive to the harboring of rats, snakes, mice, or other disease-carrying animals or insects, conditions hazardous to the safety of persons or property such as inadequate bracing, structural support, construction of the presence of deteriorated materials, and again, conditions constituting an attractive nuisance creating a hazard to the health or safety of minors. From section thirty-four two fifty-one of the Code of Ordinances, all substandard buildings or structures within the provisions of this article which shall constitute a hazard to the health, safety, or general welfare of the occupants are declared to be public nuisances and shall be ordered to be, in this case, I don't believe it can be repaired, doesn't need to be vacated, but demolished as provided in this article. That completes my presentation. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Christian?
Christian, I think regardless of the condition of the house now, it has to be torn down, bottom line. There's no ifs, ands, or whats about it. Is that a fair assumption?
That is a correct assumption, sir, yes. There's no reason for it to remain standing.
Okay, are we gonna, are we gonna talk about the progress that's been made up to this point and where we are with the owners and perhaps what their position is?
If the owners are here, we can hear from them. I dealt with the owners trying to get the property secured, various insurance companies, et cetera, to no avail.
Okay, are the owners here this evening? Is there anything that you'd like to add?
We're not, we're not there yet.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Christian, do you have anything else? Are there any questions specifically for Christian? Okay, thank you, Christian.
Yes, sir.
So we'll now call upon any lien holders, mortgagees, or owners of the property present to give an opportunity to be heard and address the nuisance issues as they relate to the minimum standards, including the scope of the work and financial capability of repairing the structure located at one five four two one Leeds Lane in Jersey Village, Texas. Do you have any lien holders, mortgagees, or owners of the property who would like to come up and address the council? Yes, sir. This gentleman had his hand up first, go ahead. You want to let this gentleman go before you? Go ahead. If you wouldn't mind just state your name, sir.
No problem. Good evening, Brandon Hackery, I'm here on behalf of AmeriFirst Home Mortgage, or sorry, AmeriHome Mortgage. The homeowner probably has a little more information than I do, I just wanted to let you know that the mortgage company is aware of the situation. Unfortunately, their hands are kind of tied because they don't have access to the property. I know an insurance claim is, in some level, being reviewed to assess the damages, my clients doing what they can to assist with that.
Did I hear you correctly, there has not been a mortgage claim to this point?
Uh, there is an insurance...
Excuse me, an insurance claim?
There is an insurance claim being processed, but I don't, as far as I know, it hasn't been completed and the insurance company is doing various investigations that they have to do prior to completing a claim.
So we do not know if, so we don't have any information as to whether the insurance has actually finished their investigation on this?
I know they have not finished it, as of my client's last contact with them earlier this month, I believe.
Okay. And it's Brandon, correct? Any other questions for Brandon? Any comments for Brandon? Yes, sir. Come on up. If you wouldn't mind, state your name, please.
My name is Lamar Dray Miller. I want to thank you for hearing me today. And to answer your question, yes, an insurance claim has actually been filed. It was filed...
And, excuse me Lamar, who are you with?
I'm the owner.
You're the owner, okay, thank you.
The, an insurance claim has actually been filed, I've actually pursued with the Texas Department of Insurance, and I also have an attorney in regards to the matter. The insurance company has sent me to three or four attorneys thus far in regards to trying not to resolve the issue. I do understand, and I thank Mr. Summers for his presentation, I do understand the nuisance of the home, I do understand that it does need to be demolished. I do understand that it is something that is not wanted to be seen. Unfortunately, in regards to this matter, I'm not asking you not to demolish the home, I have the money to demolish the home. What I'm asking you to do is vacate your judgment at this current time for demolishing the home until the insurance claim can be done. We have a meeting which is supposed to be the last meeting, as I was told in December, but I was assured that this is supposed to be the last meeting on April twenty-second in regards to another attorney for the insurance company. And after that, there is supposed to be some type of final judgment on that. If there's not, if there's a judgment, the home will be paid and it'll be demolished by the insurance company in a proper manner. If the thing is, if the insurance company does not do it, the home will still be demolished and the home will still be completed. The only thing that I'm asking for is with their, with their investigations, they still come out to the home. And one of the neighbors who was so kind to help me out lets me know when someone comes out. So I do know that they do come out and still look at the structure, and we do have a arson investigator that comes out and takes samples of the structure quite often, should I say.
Do you have any idea as to the timeline of when this investigation will be concluded?
The, the timeline, I'm not gonna say there's an exact date, but what I can say is on April twenty-second, and let me, I'm sorry, let me make sure that is the correct date, Yes, on April twenty-second, there is, because I have a meeting in my phone, so on April twenty-second at five PM, we're supposed to meet with a lawyer in regards to the insurance company, which is supposed to be the last official interview in regards to the fire claim. Unfortunately, it was an arson claim, so they feel like someone set the fire on purpose. And after that, the Texas Department of Insurance has issued that they are supposed to have thirty days after the twenty-second to complete the claim. That's what the Texas Department of Insurance has stated to me.
Any questions from council for Lamar or Brandon?
I have a question for the chief in regard to fire investigations. It's been six months since the fire. If they're still investigating, is, is there any remaining evidence that they would need to collect at this point? Or has that already been investigated and probably documented and prepared in some type of report?
My investigation's over with and was that day. I've collected what I feel is the evidence that I need, then it's turned over to the insurance fire investigator and for them to do their investigation. I don't know why they would have to come out multiple times, maybe once or twice, if they're still continuing to go out. Whatever they would collect right now would be soured because of the weather and elements that we've already had, so makes no sense to me, but...
So the timeframe, so in your opinion, the timeframe for the investigation and conclusions and that whole process has run its course. So anything at this point, I would probably view more as bureaucratic?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so whether the structure is there or not from a, from a fire investigation perspective, it doesn't matter?
I have no need personally to go back on the property. Mr. Miller gave me permission a second time when we met out there, just to go through this, the home with him, so there's no need for me. I don't know what their investigators are doing, it's beyond me.
Can I state one more thing, Mr. Mayor? I apologize, sir.
Go ahead.
And the last thing that I wanted to say, Mr. Summers has been very, very kind to me. However, the only email that I've received from Mr. Summers is an email stating that I need to put up fencing. I had fencing installed, it wasn't to his liking or to building code. I informed him that a construction manager stated that this fencing would be nice, I mean, would be not nice, but good enough to secure the property. I hadn't heard anything further until April sixth stating that I need to come here for today.
What's, realistically, what's the timeline for, if we, if we approve for demolition tonight, what's the timeline for actual demolition? Is, I'm sure it's not like tomorrow we go out and demolish the home, what's...
Counsel would have to give at least thirty days notice from the demolition as of today. So the earliest practical time would be thirty days from, I'd probably count it from tomorrow, thirty days from tomorrow.
And I think I read in the statute that we can also give a thirty-day extension, is that...
You can provide a longer period of time, there are some reporting requirements that are required if you extend it beyond the thirty days.
Also, if the city initiates destruction or removal of the, of the structure, is that through a competitive bid process?
Because it would be less than fifty thousand dollars, I would expect it would not have to be done by competitive bids, it could be done, we'd probably do informal proposals. I would, I would estimate the cost would be, to demolish the structure would be less than fifty thousand. I don't know if, has, have you received an estimate to demolish the structure?
I have received an estimate, and the lowest bid that I have received was twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Would the, would the cost to the individual versus the cost to the city, would they be different? I mean, is there any reason to believe that they would be different?
The, there would be, there could be, because it's a public works contract, effectively a public works contract, our, our contractor would probably post a bond, required, be required to post a payment bond, and a, and carry some insurance, that's likely to increase the cost maybe ten percent.
To which we would seek recovery from the property owner, correct?
Right, if the city performs demolition, then the city would place a lien on the property to cover that cost. That, that lien would be a priority lien, it is not a first lien, so I'd have to, it would, for example, avalorum taxes comes before that, where we sit with regard to the mortgage company, we might argue, but I think it would be a priority lien over them if it's done for, if it's, if it's posted.
The insurance company, is there some reason why, if it was demolished, that they might get out of paying what they owe? Put it simply. In other words, if, if we went ahead with the demolishing, are we hindering an investigation that they need to have done or something?
Without talking to the insurance company, I don't know how it would impact their investigation, but I would, as the chief indicates, it would seem to me they should have had adequate time to do an adequate investigation.
I do agree with you, sir, that they have had adequate time to do the investigation, and I also agree with you that it should be demolished. However, I do believe that if it is demolished before they are finished, they will vacate paying. I, I have a firm feeling, and the reason why is because of the individual that I'm dealing with. The person that they sent out to do the initial pictures and the initial investigation informed me, do not touch the structure, do not do anything, because this is, you're actually dealing with the worst possible person in the insurance company to deal with. And I've asked to be transferred, and the manager denied the transfer.
Is the insurance company gonna pay for the protection of the community while we're waiting on their investigations to finish?
Unfortunately, sir, no, because if they were, they would have been paid out to have the property done and finished.
I don't see how they can stop us from trying to protect the public safety.
No, and I, I think there's a difference, there's, there's a big difference between you touching the property and us touching the property. And I can understand an SI investigator telling you not to touch it and you have to stay out of it. Has TDI told you that the burden of proof is on them to deal with this investigation? That if we demolish it, we're not gonna stop their investigation? They, they've taken enough photos, they've been out there enough, as the chief pointed out, now you have spoilation issues, if you're out there at this point...
Yes, sir.
It's been too long.
The only thing that the Texas Department of Insurance has informed me of is that I need to follow every ordinance that they have in regards to their, the, the structure of the, the doc, I can't remember the name of it, I apologize, but the structure that they have for, for my claim, and that's what I'm trying to do the best...
Absolutely, you're right, you have to follow every letter of the policy and everything, but it is very different when we pull it down compared to you, so...
And that's why, and that's why I stated, and I know I've overran my five minutes, that's why I'm not asking you guys to not say demolish. I agree that it needs to be demolished. What I'm asking you to do is vacate that for, until April, I mean, well, it would be May twenty-first, because that'll be thirty days after April twenty-second. That's the only thing I'm asking.
I would have to disagree, I think you're asking for a lot more. Without the protections in place to keep somebody from getting hurt, even though they may not be legally on the property, there's always cases where people get on property that they're not supposed to get on, and they get hurt.
Yes, sir.
And...
And that can happen inside of a building that wasn't demolished, I mean, that, that could happen inside a building that wasn't destroyed as well. But if you give me some information besides saying put up fencing, I can do what, what needs to be done. If you want me to go buy four-by-eights and, and do it tonight, my thing is, I have, I took off work to do whatever you guys need for me to do. And if you need me to go put up boards, I'll go put up boards. But the information that I received, and once again, I'm not blaming Mr. Summers, he was very nice to me. He called me, he was very nice, he told me to put up fencing, I put up fencing after speaking to a construction manager that, that was, that told me that this was good enough. But if you want me to go try to board up the back of the house, I'll do that. If you want me to board up the door, I'll do that. Whatever you need me to do, I'm willing to do. I'm just trying not to have the home destroyed, because at the end of the day, that's gonna be me out of the money, not you guys unfortunately. And I'm not trying to be a butt about it, I'm just saying I'm gonna be the one out of it.
My only concern is, at the end of the day, we still have a structure there that a kid could get into, and from the looks of it, that, that structure, you know, a beam or something could fall at any moment. And if we delay things further, it sounds like there's been an effort to try to work this out well beyond what I think a reasonable person would, would suggest is needed to work this out. If we delay it further and a kid gets hurt in the process, I, I just, to me, I think it's been more than enough time.
A question, if we start the demolition process, which will take a little bit of time, I assume, does that preclude the owner from, from demolishing the building before, does it keep him off the property and preclude him from demolishing the property?
No.
Okay, so if it takes us thirty days, seemingly, probably take us thirty days to secure a contractor, schedule it, it still allows him, whatever time that is, to, to do what he needs to do and tear it down if he gets to it before us? But one way or the other, it's coming down.
Right, and there, there is a, another, I think the mortgage company has scheduled a foreclosure sale?
The foreclosure sale's actually been postponed while the insurance claim was pending.
Are you asking us for anything? I haven't heard you request anything.
I'm mostly here just for informational purposes and to report back to my client what the outcome is.
Okay, any more questions, Brandon or Lamar from council? This is actually a spec section where you have a public hearing in which anybody else can address city council, let me go ahead and open up the public hearing. I now call order this public hearing, everyone designed to speak on behalf or against recommendation action shall give his or her name and address, will be given five minutes to present information during the meeting. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide for the owner or owner's representatives of property located at one five four two one Leeds Lane in Jersey Village, Texas, to appear and show causes why such buildings or structures should not be declared to be substandard and why the owners should not be ordered to repair, vacate, demolish the buildings or structures. The burden's on the owner, lien holder, or mortgagee to demonstrate the scope of work required to comply with the ordinance, and at this time it will take to perform the work. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item? Lamar, I think you actually filled out a card already? Yeah, I think you've already addressed your comments, okay. Does anybody else wish to speak on this issue? All right, seeing that nobody else desires to speak, I'll finish this and close this public hearing. There'll be no one else, excuse me, there may be no one else desiring to speak, I'll now close the public hearing, being held to provide for the owners or the owner's representative of the property located at one five four two one Leeds Lane in Jersey Village, Texas, to appear and show cause... cause why such buildings or structures should not be declared or to be substandard and why the owner should not be ordered to repair, vacate, or demolish the buildings or structures. Do any lien holders, mortgagees, or owners wish to make any closing remarks at this time? Do any council members wish to have any additional questions for any of the participants of the public hearing this evening? Seeing none, I'll move into item D2 of our agenda this evening. Consider ordinance number 2019-08 finding the structures of 15421 Leeds Land in Jersey Village, Texas, 77040, Lot 1, Block 49, Jersey Village. The property to be substandard and a public nuisance, ordering Ashley Nicole Howard or the true owners of the property to abate the substandard and dangerous structures of the property, authorizing the city to demolish the structures on the property. If owner fails to abate the substandard and dangerous structures on the property, authorizing the city to assess a lien against the property for the cost of demolition, and making other findings and provisions related thereto. Christian Summers, our building official. Christian?
I'm available for any questions.
Christian, one of the questions that came up was fencing. Unfortunately, in your job, you can't design people's work. You can't tell them this is how, you have to tell them what the code is and that they have to meet the code. I'm assuming you've made notice that he had to meet the code, and that's where that misunderstanding comes from?
That's where the what came from? I'm sorry.
That's where, he was a little upset about not being notified about how to, which fence and whether or not it was appropriate, but you provided adequate...
Staff wasn't aware he was still the owner, once we started working with the insurance companies. So, it might have been a mayor first that I was then working with to get the property secured and placarded.
Who's responsible for securing the property? Is it the owner or the insurance company?
At that point, I was under the impression that the insurance company was responsible.
It would, it would be the owner...
Is there some reason that...
It would be the owner or whoever wants to try to preserve the property if they, to protect their own ownership interest.
Since they were investigating.
Do you have any reason to think that he wouldn't be prompt in securing it or protecting...
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I think he might be prompt in securing it now, at this juncture, but I would need something like the chain link fencing of the temporary type that you see around construction sites.
So, what do you do about rats?
And unfortunately, that's only a minor issue to all of the issues that were brought up.
It should have been secured and placarded months ago. I think it's time to demolish the structure or move that way.
Yeah, to me, this is like a classic attractive nuisance issue. You know, kids, they see it, they think, "Oh, that's awesome, I'm going to go..." I mean, I don't know if we actually know of any issues with trespassing on the property, particularly by kids, but, I mean, this is like the classic example of something where, you know, it's going to draw kids in there and some, eventually somebody's going to get hurt.
So, if this ordinance is actually approved this evening, there is a 30-day window in which the property owner could remedy this, the insurance company could make their final adjudication on this, and they could actually basically supersede whatever actions we're taking as a result of passing this ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
If you look at the form of the ordinance, since I didn't know what the outcome of the hearing would be, there's some blanks that kind of need to be worked through in Sections 2 and 3A. The, Section 2 provides 30 days, which is the minimum amount of time that you can take action. It would give the owner 30 days to demolish the structure, to remove or demolish. Section 3A is only needed if you're going to make an allowance to extend that 30-day period, and so Section 3A would be deleted unless, if you were to give more than 30 days, I had started some suggestions of what you might require in order to justify extending the period beyond 30 days. Then Section 3B would become just Section 3. If you leave it at the 30-day period, you would delete Section 3A and Section 3B becomes Section 3, and that would then permit the city to demolish the structure after 30...
Is everybody clear on that? Basically, we have a draft ordinance in which we can fill in some of the language in its current form. There's a requirement of 30 days. There's also 3A in which we can add extension requests, as well as requesting them to pull permits for any additional activity. Looking for continued comments from council and recommendations.
My feelings are that there's been plenty of time for the insurance company to have done what they need to do and make a decision, and the 30 days, we're going to go 30 more days without any placarding or any safety, just because we're going to demolish it, that I don't see a reason for an extension. I think 30 days is plenty of time and probably too much time at this point.
But it's required, and Section 3A is already written. If the owner was to put up proper fencing and prohibit unauthorized entry, then I would be inclined to allow him the 30 additional days if he met all those requirements.
If he does not, does that cause the 30 days to begin elapsing at that point?
The ordinance is written so that if he fails to meet one of your timelines, you can proceed with the demolition.
This is written in a way so that if he was going to repair the structure, we could require he meet certain milestones and stuff to get some more time. In this case, he agrees. The structure's coming down. It's only a matter of time as to when it comes down. In order to meet his request of, I think, May 21st, so you have 30 days from now, puts us May 15th, that's the earliest anything can happen at all. From May 15th to May 21st, you're looking at a week. Give the guy 3A, gives him, he puts fencing up, this will actually get us our fencing probably within the few, next few days, prevents unauthorized entry, and then you're only looking at an additional week before it starts coming down. Worst case, 60 days from now, it's on the ground.
And I, my concern isn't so much with that playing out as it should. If we could ensure that that happens, I would agree 100%. My problem is the way the ordinance is written. I don't know, I'm trying to determine how we actually have the ability, if they fail to secure the property, that we now have the authority under the ordinance to proceed with the 30 days. In other words, is it, let's say he has to have it secured within a week. There's nothing in here that says if it's not secured within the week, then the 30 days begins from the end of that week or it begins immediately. I mean, what I'm just looking for here is some more clear enforcement language so that we have definitive authority if he fails to comply with these additional conditions.
Scott, do we have a trigger in here that if they do not comply with any additional provisions, that in essence, the original 30 days kicks in?
If you give me a few minutes, I will fix that.
So, all legal councils reviewing that. I'd like to get some more input from council. Basically, it seems to me we have one of two choices. We have a choice that we can go straightforward with a, we can approve the ordinance as is, basically starting the clock for 30 days, or we can actually do some, we can actually give them some additional time with some requirements. Let me get a feel from council as to what direction they'd like to go in with, in regards to that particular question, whether we go straightforward with a 30-day time clock starting now with the approval of the ordinance, or would we like to put some other parameters on there such as construction of a fence, a little bit of an extension of time? Let me get where everybody feels on that.
My feeling is, it needs to be secured immediately. It's, since day one, it should have been secured, and, I'm sorry, I grew up right down the street from there, and I would be that kid running around, you know, getting in the mischief, as would you. So, if we are to do any kind of extension, it needs to be underneath Section 3, Section 3A where item C by blank, owner shall secure the property against unauthorized entry. That needs to be, I mean, 48 hours at the most, in my opinion, and then after that, if it's not up, we need to kick it into 30 days.
Obviously, the structure needs to be secured, that's a given. Obviously, we should do nothing that impedes or resets that timeline. I would not be opposed to, instead of 30 days, doing 45, and 45 as long as the structure's secured within, within two days, or 72 hours, let's say, and just move forward.
That's a good question. Can we make it to where, if by a certain deadline, that it's not secure, based on the judgment of the building official, according to code, that the original 30-day demolition date is in effect? Or does it have to be 30 days from the deadline to secure?
If you look at Section 3B, should the owner, lien holder, or mortgagee of the property fail to repair, remove, or demolish the substandard structures of the property, the city may demolish the structures on the property. So, are we saying in Section 3B, if they do not comply with any of the terms from 3A, we can move forward with demolition?
See, I guess, we can structure it where you can proceed with the demolition within the 30 days if they don't secure the premises within the 30-day period. The city could also directly secure the premises on its own and assess a lien against the premises for the securing of it in that interim period if the city council wanted to do that. In other words, you could erect your own fencing that you deemed appropriate, but, or you could require, permit the owner to secure the premises against unauthorized entry by a date certain, and give him through, if he does that, then extend the period for the demolition for an additional 30 days past that date.
Seems like there would be some kind of legal process you'd have to go through to, for the city to secure it, because it's owner's property. If he doesn't give permission, then how are you going to get on the property?
Because if it's a public health and safety, he's been given notice by this hearing of what the problem is. You've provided notice, and if your action is, a city has the authority to take immediate action to secure a public or private property to avoid a hazard to the public health.
My feelings are that, I agree with what Councilman Mitchum stated, but I think we go ahead and approve the demolishing of it, and you got 30 days, and if it's secured, then I'm okay with doing another 30-day extension. If that doesn't give the insurance company enough time, then I think the owner has a legitimate case against that insurance company.
So, that would actually have us fill in language on Section 38 in order to accomplish that. So, I'm thinking, I think I heard 48 hours, I think, I think we're kind of getting around to the point where we do want to give the owner the opportunity to fence it and secure it. Three days, 72 hours?
Just to be clear, I, there was a lot being discussed there. So, if it's not fenced within 72 hours, the 30-day clock would tick from the end of that 72 hours, or would it start from today? I'm okay with that.
I think you can start it from today, and then if he secures it, you can add, we could add some time, or you could schedule another hearing to consider the update.
And I guess would the appropriate language be properly secured according to code at the judgment of the building official?
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
So, you're talking about another public hearing with more notices and that whole process again?
No, I don't think another public hearing is required. At this point, you've, you've...
Yeah, we've already accomplished the public hearing, we could just have another agenda item in which there's a revised ordinance, so you can go straightforward with a demolition, straight demolition ordinance.
Effectively, you're authorizing the city manager to, if, when you adopt this, to have the structure demolished without ever coming back. City manager would still have to make a determination, you know, whether the work's been done.
But to your point, Scott, we can actually structure this ordinance to where city council does not have to bring this back up again. We need to have the proper triggers and mechanisms in place to make the decision tonight. So, what I'm hearing is, I think, I think council would like to structure an ordinance in which the owner's given 72 hours to properly secure the property. If at that, at the end of 72 hours, the property is not secured to the building official's satisfaction, then the 30-day demolition clock starts as of today. However, if he does secure within the 72 hours to the building official's specification, then I think there's an additional grace period, I think, where we say an additional 30 days to remedy, or, that's, basically, the next thing we need to determine is if they do comply with securing the property, what extension do they get? That's, that's pretty much the last component we need to determine at this point.
I think you only need to tack an additional 15.
I'd say 45.
15 for a total of 45?
Scott, were you rewriting this?
Yes. In Section 2, the 30 days becomes 45 days. In Section 3A, the blank is Lamar Dre Rashad Miller appeared before city council and represented that he owns the property. Owner has requested, and the city council permits 45 days to demolish the structure. Since the city council is permitting more than 30 days to demolish the structure, the following specific time schedule is established for the commencement, performance of the work by 4/18. Owner shall secure the property against unauthorized entry. And then starts in Section 3B, should the owner, lien holder fail to remove, shall fail to demolish, to secure, and demolish the structure as provided above, the city manager may demolish the structures on the property, including clearing and rubbing of the property, and may place a lien incurred by the city in accordance with the code and state law.
All right. In essence, if the property owner, the property owner has 72 hours to fence and secure the property, if they don't, they have 30 days, and if they do, they have 45 days to get everything worked out with their insurance company and ultimately demolish the property. We have a 45-day window, sir.
And that's 45 days from today?
Any other questions? All right, looking for a motion on the revised ordinance.
I move to approve.
Excuse me. Yes, 45 days for what?
To demolish the property.
Okay. So, at the end of 45 days, it's going to be demolished?
Yeah, the property owner, the property owner's already said that the insurance company's willing to demolish it. They've got 45 days to do it or are working to do it.
Okay. I'll move to approve. I move to approve ordinance number 2019-08.
As revised.
As revised.
Second.
This has been a motion, second's an additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor, opposed, and the abstentions motion carries. This actually brings us into citizen comments this evening. Citizens who've signed a card and wish to speak at the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance to the Texas Public Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject. It may respond only to statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes. Further comments to city council. Mr. Gary Hopkins. Mr. Hopkins in attendance this evening? Going once, going twice, forever silence. Merrily Beasley.
I pulled some muscles, so if you would, you'd make your... All right. Jason, would you please hand those, pass those around? Thank you. All right, and then pass some more of these around. All right. So, as many of you know, I'm running for Jersey Village City Council. So, this is Merrily Beasley for JV City Council, putting you in charge. Dear Jersey Village voter, my name is Merrily Beasley, and I'd like to explain why I'm running for Jersey Village City Council, position two. I want to bring a message to the Jersey Village City Council that they can no longer negotiate critical contracts in secret and vote on them in sudden, short notice council meetings. I'd like Jersey Village to stop subsidizing losing ventures with taxpayer funds and buying properties with city general obligation bonds. I don't want the citizens to cross Highway 290 to visit... I don't want the citizens to cross Highway 290 to visit their city offices, and I want to stop useless and dangerous public projects. I want to return priorities where they belong. For example, sewers and flood abatement, and not needless projects that will not raise property values or attract new residents. Finally, citizens must vote on these things. City council members are not smarter than you. They should represent you. Their job, my big job, is to find out what you need before they buy it. If they plan something big, they need to take it to you first, not hide in executive session and dump it for a vote in its first public display. They should, and I will, ask for permission and not forgiveness. I have lived in Jersey Village for almost forty years. I raised my children here. I've worked or been involved in many fields, corporate, healthcare, education, and real estate investing. In all of those fields, I never forgot who the customer was. In JV City Council work, the customer is you. My Jersey Village friends and neighbors who asked me to run share my grave concerns about the current attitude of the JV City Council. Did they ask you if you preferred a golf course and a convention center over a flood-retention pond? Did they consider the health and safety risks of splash pads and dog cars? Now, how could shocking fiscal realities force them to reschedule fixing our streets and sewers? My surprise is their surprise. As citizens warned them for years that these problems were coming, they weren't listening. I will. I'm Mary Lee Rosine Beasley. I'm a nurse. I have an education master's. I have an MBA. I'm a candidate, and at the bottom it says, "Vote in person and check if your mail-in ballot has already voted." Because last year, I investigated the election, and it turned out three people, three people had mail-in ballots, and they never applied. And one of them is my neighbor, and he went up to vote, and he could not. All right, so, you see my card? Now, because we've had some issues last year, I recommend that we consider getting a camera and putting it on. We can't put it on the ballot box, I've already checked, but we could put it on where the ballot box is stored throughout the election. And that would help with the problems with, perhaps, we have a strange situation with an old-fashioned ballot box that has a large slit in it. I don't know why we don't do electronic voting. I think it's very odd, but that box provides a-
Mary Lee, you need to address council so we can get your comments.
Okay. Well, anyway, I think that old-fashioned ballot box with the very large slit is a problem. I've been researching this. I've spoken to a lot of people in Harris County, and I do not understand why we do not have electronic voting here. And I think that's been brought to your attention before. I don't understand it. So I recommend that we consider having a camera during the election on the office, so none of us are worried about that box.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question, and this is regarding the public comment period itself. I'm not sure if Mrs. Beasley believes that it's appropriate to ask city staff to use city resources to distribute campaign literature for herself during a city council meeting. I have no problem with citizens coming up here and making comments about matters specifically having to do with policy of the city or an issue of concern, but I find it to be highly inappropriate to ask city staff, to ask our director of Parks and Recreation, to distribute her campaign literature. If any of us did that, that would be completely, we would be skewered for this, and I think it's extremely inappropriate.
Councilman, your comments are noted. Moving on to other citizen comments. Mark Malloy.
Okay, the first thing I want to make sure of is the audio is being recorded. There's been meetings where the audio was not recorded. Okay, my name's Mark Malloy, 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member, the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the '04-15-2019 city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I am here this evening to ask the Jersey Village City Government if they are going to give the Jersey Village homeowners that have a homestead exemption filed with Harris County, Texas, the total twenty percent property tax exemption, and if they are going to give the sixty-five-year-and-older homeowners the additional $160,000 homestead exemption. The city of Jersey Village, Texas, is currently only giving the homesteaded homeowners an eight percent property tax exemption, and the sixty-five-year-and-older homesteaded homeowners an additional $50,000 property tax exemption. Currently, a homeowner with a homestead exemption with an appraised value of $250,000 times the eight percent exemption is getting a $20,000 exemption. If they are sixty-five years and over, they are getting an additional $50,000 exemption, which comes to a total of $70,000 property tax exemption. If the city of Jersey Village, Texas, was giving the full twenty percent property tax exemption on the same $250,000 home, the homeowner would be receiving a $50,000 exemption. And if they are sixty-five years old or older and receiving the $160,000 property tax exemption, their total property tax exemption would be $210,000. The homeowners currently are losing out on an additional $30,000 of homestead property tax exemption, and the sixty-five-year-and-older homeowners are losing out on an additional $140,000 property tax exemption. The city of Houston and Harris County are giving the total twenty percent property tax homestead exemption and the total $160,000 sixty-five-year-and-older homesteaded property tax exemption. The city of Jersey Village, Texas, has accumulated a very large excess of tax and fee revenue. The estimated amount of stockpiled revenue is $17.5 million. The city government should be giving the homesteaded homeowners the full twenty percent property tax exemption, and the sixty-five-year-and-older, the twenty percent homestead exemption, and the additional total $160,000 property tax exemption. Many taxpayers are not on board with all the money the city government has accumulated and is planning on spending without their ability to vote to allow the city to spend the money. So anyway, now I want to talk about a previous city council back in 2001. JV City Council postponed city hall project in favor of the fire station. Approximately three hundred citizens recently signed a petition asking the city to allow citizens to vote on whether they want the city to create more debt with the construction of the two proposed structures. The petition was presented to the city council at the meeting. The petition was distributed by concerned citizens for Jersey Village Committee members at the meeting, and they expressed concern that the council is disregarding the will of the electorate. So basically, you know, what ended up happening is the citizens made the city government allow them to vote on issues that dealt with a new city hall, renovations to the fire department, and the first round of residential street reconstruction projects. And so, anyway, they ended up doing what the citizens voted to approve. And so, what ended up happening after that is, they ended up taking, and back in 2007, the city government on October seventeen, 2007, decided to create an unassigned facilities replacement fund to accumulate revenue to be able to do projects that would allow decisions to be made, to fund projects, without asking the citizens if they wanted the projects to be done.
Mark, time.
So anyway, basically, like I said, you need to be letting them make decisions on large expenditures of their money.
And the crowd goes wild. Barbie Freeman.
Hi, my name is Barbie Freeman. I live at 15501 Jersey Drive, and I just wanted to pay tribute to one of the icons of Jersey Village for many, many years. Joyce Berube, as most everyone knows, passed away this last week, and I just want to say, we owe her a great deal of gratitude for all that she did for the city. She was a councilman, she was a mayor pro temp, she was, served on many committees. She was the face of much of Jersey Village, and I think we owe her a great deal of gratitude, and any tribute we can pay to her, I think we should. I think Joyce will be remembered as, the love of her life is Jersey Village, and making this a better community, which she obviously did. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Barbie. Move directly into the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, the report is in front of you this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions for Austin? All right, then, move directly into the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda, place it to the regular agenda? CNN, looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
This has been a motion, seconds or additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions motion carries. Item H, regular session. Consider resolution number 2019-14 suspending the May 27, 2019 effective date of the proposal by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corp., DBA Centerpoint Energy Intex and Centerpoint Energy Tax Gas, Texas Gas, Houston Division, implement interim grip rate adjustments for gas utility investments in 2018, and requiring delivery of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Austin Blee, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, on March 28th of this year, Centerpoint Gas made interim rate adjustment or grip filings with the cities in their Houston division. The company seeking recovery of $99 million invested capital. Last year, the increase was $112,238,512. The current filing will increase rates to residential customers by fifty-eight cents a month. This increase will, this will increase the current residential customer charge from $1,593 to $1,651 per month. The increases are currently scheduled to go into effect on May 27th. Under the grip statute, city may not challenge the company's request. The only action the city may take is to suspend the effective date of the rate increase by forty-five days. The proposed resolution, if adopted, will suspend the rate increase that would otherwise go into effect on May 27, 2019, for forty-five days. The recommended motion will be to approve resolution number 2019-14.
All right, any questions for Austin?
So this is basically just to extend it out by forty-five days to suspend it, so that we can give proper council time to?
Yeah, there's nothing we can do to further stop it. The Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, which the city of Jersey Village is a member of, is recommending that all of their members in this area pass this resolution to delay the increase by forty-five days.
All right, looking for a motion on the resolution.
Move to approve resolution number 2019-14.
Second.
This has been a motion, seconds or additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions motion carries. Item two, consider resolution number 2019-15 suspending the May 10, 2019 effective date of Centerpoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's requested rate change. Permit the city time to study the request and establish reasonable rates. Approving continued cooperation with the Gulf Coalition of Cities, hiring Lloyd Gosling attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, requiring reimbursement of the city's rate case expenses. Finding that the meeting at which the resolution is passed is open to the public and required by, as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. City Manager, Austin Bleece.
Mayor and councilors, Centerpoint Energy Houston Electric LLC has filed an application on April 5th of this month to increase system-wide transmission and distribution rates by $161 million per year. The company asks to improve an increase in $154 million in retail transmission and distribution rates, which is an increase of about 7.4 percent, and $6.8 million in wholesale transmission rates, which is an increase of about 1.8 percent. According to Centerpoint, the impact on an average residential customer would be an increase of about $2.38 per month. This resolution suspends the May 10, 2019 effective date of the company's rate increase for the maximum period permitted by law to allow the city, working in conjunction with other members of the GCCC, the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, served by Centerpoint, to evaluate the filing, determine whether the filing complies with law, and if lawful, determine what further strategy, including settlement, to pursue. So the law provides that a rate request made by an electric utility cannot become effective until at least thirty-five days following the filing of the application to change rates. The law permits the city to suspend the rate change for ninety days after the due date, after the date of the rate change would otherwise be effective. If the city fails to take some action regarding the filing before the effective date, Centerpoint's rate request is deemed approved. All of the costs associated with this would be paid for already by the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, that's already in our dues that we pay to them on an annual basis, so this won't impact our general fund further.
Okay, any questions for Austin? CNN, looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move to approve resolution number 2019-15.
Second.
This has been a motion, seconds or additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions motion carries. Item three, consider resolution number 2019-16 approving the assignment of the purchase option of approximately 10.56 acres of land southeast of US 290 on either side of Jones Road in Jersey Village, Texas, to Collaborate Special Projects LLC, and authorizing the city manager to take all appropriate necessary steps to complete the assignment. Austin Bleece.
Tonight, the city council can take another step forward in the development of Village Center. In July 2018, the city entered into a settlement agreement with Jones Road Project LTD, which included a purchase option for the property on Jones Road, identified on the plat map as restricted reserve D and E of Jones Road 290 Commercial Reserves. As part of the Chapter 38 agreement, the city entered into Collaborate Special Projects LLC. In March, the city needs to assign our purchase option of the property to them. As such, Collaborate will be purchasing the property, and the city will not. If for some reason Collaborate Special Project does not complete the purchase of the property, the city would have the right to do so before the timelines in the purchase agreement expire. The attached resolution authorizes the assignment of the purchase option and authorizes the city manager to take all appropriate and necessary steps to complete the assignment. So the recommended action will be to approve resolution 2019-16.
All right, any questions for Austin?
So just to be clear, Austin, I want to make sure this is crystal clear. The city is not paying for this property. We are transferring the option, and then Collaborate will purchase the property using their own funds.
Correct.
Just want to be sure.
All right, looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move, we approve resolution 2019-16.
Second.
This has been a motion, seconds or additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed, and the abstentions motion carries. Consider item four, consider resolution number 2019-17, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Collaborate Architects LLC for architectural and engineering services for Jersey Village City Hall located at the Village Center Development. Austin Bleece.
With the announcement of the Village Center Development, a new city hall is being proposed in the development. By putting city hall there, we can offer a lot of savings to the taxpayer and synergy for the development. They estimate this new city hall to be approximately 28,800 square feet in size at a construction cost of approximately 5.1 million. That does not include furniture fixtures and equipment. A facility of this size will allow for some future growth that may be necessary over the next fifty years. It's also important to note that the new city hall will house more than we, than what we have here today in the future, and it'll also serve the community for the next fifty years and beyond. The proposal for architectural and engineering services for the Jersey Village City Hall located in the Village Center Development is on the following pages. The proposed services include pre-designed services, schematic design phase, design development phase, construction documents, assistance with permitting, putting the work out to bid, construction administration, furniture fixtures and equipment services, and project management services. For the fiscal year, we budgeted $450,000 for design services. For the next two fiscal years, we've earmarked $8 million for the construction of the building for a total project budgeted cost of $8,450,000. We have the proposal before the council tonight, and the architects are ready to get started on the design quickly. So the recommended action will be to approve resolution 2019-17, authorizing the city manager to enter into the contract, contract for services for architectural and engineering services for Jersey Village City Hall located in the Village Center Development.
Thank you, Austin. Any questions for Austin? Looking for a motion on the resolution.
Actually, I'll just say one thing. You know, I went back and talked to a lot of people about this after the announcement, and, because I wanted to make sure that we were getting a good read on exactly what people would like to see in the future of their community. And, and it was, if we just looked at the people who either didn't care or favored having city hall being moved over there, it was roughly half of the people I talked to. And we're talking in the 200-plus range of people I talked to, just over the last couple of weeks. If you include the people who said, all other things being equal, I'd rather it stay where it is, but if it's going to help this development, then I have no problem with it being moved over there. It goes to more of an eighty in favor and twenty still opposed. I think what this illustrates is, and it's not scientific, I'm not claiming it is, but I think it does illustrate that there is a strong desire to see development done, and that this being a key part of it, people either flat-out are okay with the new location, or in light of the overall synergy that can come from this development, that a vast majority of people- majority of people that we've talked to have expressed favorability towards it. So I feel very comfortable with this. I was a little bit skeptical when this was first proposed. I've come around because I've seen the potential that can come about and the fact that we can have a much greater development, a much higher end development than we would otherwise.
You asked questions about Austin. Didn't have any. I've got discussion though. Just as Barbie pointed out, I've talked to a lot of people about this. I initially did not agree at all with moving city hall across 290. Since then, I've talked to a lot. I've gotten pretty much the same feedback you've gotten. I would agree with those ratios. The other thing that I did is I reached out to a lot of friends that I've made over the years, architects and planners for large developments or school districts who look at older buildings, renovation versus demolish versus move to a new site. And what I found from a lot of their advice and what I've learned from some advice from Councilman Holden was that this is the most economical path to take. The best replacement of this structure is to build at a new site, especially one that is going to be major under construction. It's going to be the cheapest way for the city to fix the problem that we have. So I fully support this move.
And I've lived and breathed it for a long time and I support this move as well.
I devoted an entire mayor's newsletter to it. Not to echo what everybody says, this is going to be, this is going to be a beautiful town center for everybody. It's not, it's not just going to be some sort of Taj Mahal, city hall for Austin to have a 20,000 square foot office and things like that. No, this is going to be, this is going to, this is going to be a great town center for everybody. It's going to, we're going to, it's going to be a focal point for the community. It's going to be a place where we can have our enhanced farmer's market. We're going to have enhanced community activities. We'll have a water feature. We'll have an amphitheater. It'll be a rallying point for a growing community in the 21st century and I'm excited to support it. And it's going to be a foundational building block for the Village Center, which is going to make this the 21st century Jersey Village. Any other comments?
All right, looking for Resolution Number 2019-17.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-17.
I'll second.
There's been a motion. Seconds or additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed? And the abstentions motion carries. Item 5, Consider Ordinance Number 2019-09 Adopting a Water Conservation Plan for the City of Jersey Village. Mending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Chapter 70 Utilities by Mending Article 6 Water Conservation Plan Providing a Severability Clause Providing a Penalty and Providing Section 1-8 of the Code Providing an Effective Date. Kevin Hagerich, Director of Public Works.
Since 2014, the city has been required by the Texas Water Development Board to have a water conservation plan as we have more than 3,300 meter connections. This plan must be updated every five years. The Texas Water Code requires retail public water suppliers with more than 3,300 connections to conduct and submit a water loss audit annually, report annually to the Texas Water Development Board on process of implementing their current water conservation plan and develop and submit an updated water conservation plan every five years. The water audit addresses four main points of water loss. Loss from distribution lines, inaccuracies in meters, deficiencies in accounting practices, and theft. The utility profile provides information related to the city of Jersey Village historical usage as well as current residential and commercial usage. The Public Works Department has created a water conservation plan. The plan identifies conservation goals, best management practices, and water conservation methods that the water, that the city will target over the next five to 10 years. City staff will identify costs associated with the program and address them accordingly within the capital improvement plan. Currently, the Public Works Department has completed the annual water loss audit, utility profile report, water conservation plan, and submitted completed reports before the May 1, 2019 deadline. This agenda item is to adopt the water conservation plan and amend, excuse me, the Code of Ordinances, set forth the rules and regulations of the plan. Therefore, the recommended action is to approve Ordinance 2019-9 Adopting a Water Conservation Plan for the City of Jersey Village, Amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Jersey Village, Chapter 70 Utilities by Mending Article 6 Water Conservation Plan Providing a Severity Clause Providing a Penalty as Provided by Section 1/8 of the Code and Providing for an Effective Date.
All right, any questions for Kevin?
Not quite Kevin, actually, Jason. So I read through this whole plan and one of the things that jumped out to me was irrigation controllers in the parks and you had to create a plan for the parks. One of the immediate concerns to me was cost. Is all that equipment already in place or do you foresee us having to spend any money to meet your plan that you had to create?
I think for the most part, we're okay. We're going to have to make a few modifications, but nothing, not a huge impact on the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin? All right, looking for a motion on the ordinance.
I move to approve Ordinance Number 2019-09.
Second.
There's been a motion. Seconds or additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed? And the abstentions motion carries. Consider Resolution Number 2019-18 Appointing a Board Member to the Board of Adjustments to Fill the Unexpired Term for Place A2. Lori Cootie.
Ah, yes, Mayor. With the passing of Joyce Barube, there is going to be a vacancy on Board of Adjustment. It's for position A2. That will be for the unexpired term. The term began October 2018. It will end September of 2020 and there was an application of interested residents in the packet.
All right, any questions? Go ahead.
Lori, weren't there two applications for this position? Did one of them back out and choose not to serve?
Yes, there was one other applicant that I called and asked if, it was from prior time, back in October when we took, excuse me, in September when we were doing board appointments. And that individual said that wasn't interested at this time.
Okay, thank you. I have a hard time with one applicant who readily admits he can't make the meetings. One of your, one of your emails said that this Nestor applicant couldn't make meetings during the day.
Yeah, I revisited the application though and it, I was mistaken. If you look on there, he does say he can make it.
Ah, well then I nominate Nestor.
All right, there, we have one applicant. I'm going to go ahead and assume that there's a resolution number 2019-18 nominating Nestor Minne for the Board of Adjustments to Fill Unexpired Term Place A2. Been a motion on the resolution?
I'll second the nomination.
Oh, you moved to approve the resolution with the nomination. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you've seconded?
I second that.
Okay. There's been a motion. Second, additional discussion. CNN, all those in favor? Opposed? And the abstentions motion carries. Mayor and council comments? Gary Wobenhorst.
I'm never going to stop being first on this, am I?
You got to get it started right.
All right, really all I have is expression of sympathy for the family of Joyce Barube and just seconding the comments made by Barbie Freeman that we really should be, express gratitude for all the services she's provided this city and the type of citizen that she was. She was a model citizen.
I'm going to keep it just limited to Joyce. She was definitely a face of Jersey Village and I live down the street from her and had a lot of respect for her. If anybody is interested, her services are on Saturday, May 11th at St. Max's.
I'm going to really miss Joyce. You know, I also live down the street from her and she would stop by all the time to give hugs to my daughters and she was, her optimism was contagious and she loved this place. And she definitely left this place better than she found it and a little too soon, unfortunately. And we'll just miss her a lot.
Yeah, I'd like to express the same sentiments as the rest of council. I worked with Joyce for a few years on council and, and very dedicated to the city. And just interesting, interestingly enough, up to just a few weeks ago, she was asking for ways to serve, volunteering for committees and still inquiring as to how she can contribute. So my condolences to her family.
I have a very brief, funny story that I think illustrates Joyce's joy perfectly. My wife once, I wish she would do it more often, but she once went to a Jersey Village Women's Group meeting to come play bunko. And she came home and she said, "I had a very strange interaction with a woman who insisted that I come back and tell you that Mama Joyce is feeling fine. She's gotten a lot better since, I guess she was in the hospital at some point. This was a few years ago." And I said, "Oh, it's Joyce Barube." And she goes, "Oh, she, she loves you. She just couldn't, you know, she just was, was treating me like I was her daughter." And I'm like, "I, that's just, that's Joyce and she's always been that way since I've known her." And, and it was, you couldn't help but just feel that joy every time you saw Joyce.
A lot of great things have been said about Joyce. I will always personally be thankful for her and grateful for her, for her support and her mentorship. I actually assumed her position on council position one in 2012 when she was term limited and then she was an early supporter of mine. I'll never forget that and I'll always be grateful for that. She did a fantastic job of representing our community and representing the values of Jersey Village and she exemplified service. And there's a lot of people here in this room tonight who are service-minded and Joyce Barube was one of them and we're all better for it and we thank her very much for her service and her legacy here in this community. Everybody remember we've got an election coming up. Go vote. I want to thank everybody for their attendance tonight. Meeting adjourned.